Councilmember Ramos told me I had to be firmer with the gavel, so appreciate that. Thank you. Good evening. This seventh regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Tonight's invocation will be offered by Reverend Dr. Robert Richard Allen Turner of Empowerment Temple AME. Reverend Turner, the floor is yours.
Let us pray. Almighty and all-knowing and everlasting benevolent Father, we, your children, bow here this evening to beg of you for your wisdom, to thank you for your mercy, and ask you, God, for the courage to do right by your children. Help us to see the wonderful blessing it is for us to be counted amongst the living, and let us this day not have our living be in vain. God help us to live lives that epitomizes your goodness, and remember you in all that we do, and say that one day we will be held accountable to you on that great getting up morning. In your holy and mighty name, we pray and ask it all. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Turner. Councilmember Blanchard will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Councilman.
As my allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, we are nation, by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum. Only Councilmember McCray is absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journal for the March tenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. Bills signed by the mayor can be found in the meeting agenda. We'll now turn to executive nominations.
EA twenty-five dash zero 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 four, Makita Drake, member, Public Art Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero 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 five, Jazz Ehrenberg, member, Public Art Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero 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 six, Shanique Kumey, member, Public Art Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero 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 seven, Mary Ann Mears, member, Public Art Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero 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 eight, Amy Ray's, member, Public Art Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero 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 nine, Evan Richardson, member, Public Art Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA twenty-five dash zero zero one zero, Stanley Mazarov, member, Public Art Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. That concludes executive nominations. Now we move on to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four zero, zoning uses retail small-box establishment for the purpose of making small-box discount retail stores a conditional use by approval of the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals in all commercial zoning districts, setting use standards for new small-box discount retail stores and defining certain terms. Lead sponsors Middleton and Ramos, co-sponsors Parker, Conway, Middleton, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Glover.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you colleagues for those that have signed on. This is a bill that Councilwoman Ramos and I have, we partnered with last term, and the issue was brought to the Planning Commission, and long story short, there needed to be some more work done to it, so we brought it back this term. And through the whole process, Johns Hopkins has been doing extensive research and, you know, helping and lending a hand on this particular bill as well. And so now we have a nice, clean bill that is basically straight into the point, and it addresses the troubling increase of small-box stores, particularly the dollar stores in specific areas. Many of us have noticed that these stores tend to cluster closely together within the same neighborhood, resulting in a saturation that reduces the variety of shopping options available for residents. This concentration now only limits customer choices but also impacts the economic landscape by making it difficult for independent grocers and specialty shops to succeed. This bill is not intended to eliminate grocery stores, stores that include a pharmacy or primarily selling hygiene products, fuel stations, and thrift stores. Our objective is to establish a balanced retail environment where small businesses can thrive alongside larger chains, offering a diverse range of products that meet various needs and preferences. We believe that with the right policies in place, we can cultivate a more equitable and inclusive community that promotes both economic development and the welfare of its residents. I invite you to share your thoughts and experiences on this issue, as your insights are crucial to shaping policies that truly reflect the community's aspirations. Together, we can build a vibrant, resilient community that values diversity and innovation and its local values and its local economy. And I do want to give a shout out for Johns Hopkins. They have just been very patient, and also, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for the work that you have been doing. So we've also talked with the Law Department, and, you know, just to clean up exactly what we needed in this bill. I personally got involved, I know everyone knows where the intersection of Liberty Heights and Garrison Boulevard is located, and there's a Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, a variety store. Well, we had Walgreens, which closed, but they're, it's just the same type of store, and our goal is to basically try to require that you can't have, you shouldn't have the same type of store, at least within a half a mile radius, and this will help to clean up some of the problems that these stores carry with them. And again, I thank you all for those that have signed on, and my co-sponsor, if you'd like to add some things, you may.
Councilmember, thank you, Madam Vice President. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Vice President, for your leadership on this issue. I think it is something that we've all talked about at one point in time or another. I just wanted to add two points to what the Council Vice President said, and that is that the definition of small-box retail, it came up earlier in our meeting, so I wanted to make sure it was very clear publicly, that it's a retail goods establishment that has between five thousand and twelve thousand square feet of retail space, is part of a chain of stores that has more than ten locations in the city, regardless of ownership, and also offers for sale assorted inexpensive goods in small units, so like one chip bag as opposed to a package of chip bags. So look forward to the discussion here. The last piece is that we want to make these uses as conditional use. So we are defining them in the zoning code, but then saying in every commercial area that they are a conditional use approved by the zoning board. That means there has to be a hearing, which means there has to be dialogue with the community about the use, and possibly an agreement or disapproval. So it opens up the transparency around these stores showing up in our neighborhoods, and like the Vice President said, does have a mandate of making sure that there's half a mile in between each store. So I'm looking forward to the dialogue, and thank you again, Madam Vice President, for your leadership, and thanks, everybody, for your support on this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four one, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R seven zoning district, variance twenty-six, twenty-eight Edmondson Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R seven zoning district on the property known as twenty-six, twenty-eight Edmondson Ave., as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, granting variances regarding certain bulk regulations, lot size area, and off-street parking requirements, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four two, retirement savings plan, clarifying amendment, for the purpose of clarifying the definition of service for the members of the retirement savings plan and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Labor and Workforce Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four three, employees' retirement system, Class C filing period amendment, for the purpose of increasing the time period required between filing for and commencing receipt of service retirement benefits by Class C members and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Labor and Workforce Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four four, employees' retirement system, Board of Trustees, membership and qualification, for the purpose of making certain amendments to the membership and qualifications of the members of the Employees' Retirement Systems' Board of Trustees and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Labor and Workforce Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four five, supplementary state fund operating appropriation, Department of Recreation and Parks Service, six-five-four, urban forestry, ninety thousand dollars, for the purpose of providing a supplementary state fund operating appropriation in the amount of ninety thousand dollars to the Department of Recreation and Parks Service, six-five-four, urban forestry, to provide funding for addressing the pressing concerns surrounding the detrimental impact of deer on forested natural areas within Baltimore City parks, particularly those affecting forest ecology in the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, Inflation Reduction Act, IRA, disadvantaged communities, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four six, supplementary state revenue operating appropriation, Health Department Service, seven-two-three, advocacy for seniors, ninety thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars, for the purpose of providing a supplementary state fund operating appropriation in the amount of ninety thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars to the Health Department Service, seven-twenty-three, advocacy for seniors, to provide funding for assisting and guiding caregivers of persons with dementia, building community awareness of dementia, and strengthening the ability of area agencies on aging to provide services to the growing number of Marylanders with ADRD and their family caregivers, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four seven, supplementary federal fund operating appropriation, Mayor's Office of Employment Development Service, seven-nine-five, workforce services for Baltimore residents, two hundred and six thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars, for the purpose of providing a supplementary federal fund operating appropriation in the amount of two hundred and six thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars to the Mayor's Office of Employment Development Service, seven-ninety-five, workforce services for Baltimore residents, to provide funding for Recovery Friendly Workplace Pilot, RFW, to educate the business community about the benefits of providing resources for employees struggling with substance use disorder, and for job seekers in recovery that have barriers to employment because of their previous struggles with substance abuse, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four eight, supplementary federal fund operating appropriation, Mayor's Office of Employment Development Service, seven-nine-five, workforce services for Baltimore residents, one million three hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars, for the purpose of providing a supplementary federal fund operating appropriation in the amount of one million three hundred seventy-five six hundred fifty-five dollars to the Mayor's Office of Employment Development Service, seven-nine-five, workforce services for Baltimore residents, to provide funding for case management, barrier removal, supportive services, and skills training to workers dislocated by the Francis Scott Key Bridge collapse, as well as offering occupational skills training to prepare workers to assist with disaster recovery efforts, and eventually the reconstruction of the bridge, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero four nine, release of access easement, vehicular access to U.S. Route forty through sixty-seven oh nine Pulaski Highway, for the purpose of authorizing the release and surrender by the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore of all of its interest in and to the access easement generally described as a thirty-foot-wide parcel which extends from Pulaski Highway on the north to the southern boundary of the property along the entire eastern boundary of the property, the easement area previously granted by W.H. Pulaski LLC, predecessor in interest to the current landowner, sixty-seven oh nine Pulaski LLC. The location and course of the access easement to be released being created and described by that certain access easement agreement dated October seventh, two thousand eleven, and recorded among the land records of Baltimore City, thirteen eight oh six, page three two three five, the access easement. Lead sponsor, McCray, on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We will now move to resolutions of the City Council. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one five R, informational hearing, well-being of the transgender community in Baltimore, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Mayor's Office, the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Public School System, the Mayor's Office of Homeland Services, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs, the Baltimore City Office of Equity and Civil Rights, the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City, the Baltimore City Department of Social Services, the Maryland Department of Health, and Behavioral Health Systems of Baltimore, to update the council on services provided to and the general well-being of the transgender community in Baltimore. Lead sponsor, Porter, co-sponsors, Parker, Conway, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilmember Porter.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my entire career, I wanted to make sure that we not only pay attention to those that are seen in the city, but also I wanted to make sure that we pay attention to those unseen in this city. Baltimore Safe Haven shared with me that there are some issues that are happening in the transgender community that need to be addressed, and so this is an opportunity for us to bring accountable agencies to share the progress and build upon the work that's been happening with Councilmember Burnett in 2019 to now. But also, this is an opportunity for transgender people in Baltimore City to feel seen and to feel heard, and also to make sure that the provisions that are set within our city are not only affordable but accountable as well to their very being in our city and in our nation. And just to add context, this is the second series that I've been doing related to mental health well-being. The first one started with our children and youth. Next, we're talking about transgendered identity, and then we'll move into Black Moms as we go into Black Maternal Health Week. My goal is to make sure that all people are seen within our city and our value sets align with that precedent. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. This resolution is right on time. We know that we have an extremely hostile administration in D.C. that seeks to erase trans people from public life, and that here in Baltimore, all are welcome, and we value all of our communities, particularly folks who have experienced marginalization in one form or another, and so appreciate your leadership on this, and appreciate the folks who are here tonight, and the folks who cannot be here tonight but who are part of this community as well. This bill has been assigned to the Public Health and Environment Committee. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye. Opposed, please say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We now move to bills on second reader. The chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules to allow for short titles for the rest of the meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles. We will proceed with reading short titles. Our first and only bill on second reader comes from the Housing and Economic Development Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero 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 three, historic preservation/conservation district establishment.
Chair recognizes Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Council Bill twenty-five zero zero three, historic preservation and conservation district establishment, sponsored by Chairman Bullock. This bill was heard on March eleventh. It was recommended as favorable amendments. However, Mr. President, in order to work out a number of issues with the financial costs of this, given our current financial and budget crisis that we have, whether it be the federal or the state level, we are in negotiations actively with the administration to make sure that this bill comes out of committee as amended, but also with the right to strength on it as well, so that we can afford the opportunity for neighbors in West Baltimore or any part of Baltimore to participate in the preservation of their historic buildings. With that being said, I would like to have community members stand as a show of support for the bill, as many have come to support this bill, and I just want to say this because not often people get a chance to come into the hall and see how we actually work on the facts. This is my promise as a chair, as we are doing these negotiations, you will get a bill. It will be passed out of committee, and it will be appropriate for our community, and we will see you and see you. So I just wanted you to stand so that this council sees you, I see you in the public theater. Thank you.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to move to refer this bill back to you, the Housing and Economic Development Committee. Thank you, Chair Torrance. All those in favor of recommitting the bill to committee, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will return to the Housing and Economic Development Committee. We now turn to bills on third reader for final passage. The clerk will read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero 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 one, Department of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero 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 two, study and report absences in Baltimore City schools.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock for floor amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. There is one amendment that is on the Councilmember's desk. This amendment is a brief one. It simply strikes a shall, City Schools shall, and inserts City Council shall invite City Schools to, because it's a legal issue in terms of what we can require from City Schools. So I'd like...
All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The amendment is adopted. In compliance with the charter, we are distributing an enrolled copy of the bill. Before we vote, I will give members a quick minute to review the enrolled third-reader copy, which incorporates the amendment that we just passed before we vote. Madam Clerk, please read the enrolled bill and call the roll.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero 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 two, study and report absences in Baltimore City schools. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilman Torrance.
I just want to explain my vote, Mr. Chair. For those, even though I worked at City Schools, I would like to thank the sponsor of the bill, but I want to reiterate my comments both in committee as well as to the floor last time, but also the comments in the press. City Schools has spent millions of dollars on home visits as well as supports for families. They still have no data. While I understand the challenges that our families face, the comments still remain the same. Every report that we've had, whether it's from the fund to attendance work, has said two things. We have an issue with school choice, transportation, we also have access with homelessness and affordability of homes in the city, which make people transient. Until City Schools has the data to affirm what their knowledge is and what we know, I still remain a reluctant yes, but I understand that there is an urgency to address this issue. I think that this bill, worded down as City Schools shall, it should be a must. If they're going to expend millions of dollars on these actual resources for families, they should have the data to back it up, and they still have not produced that data to back it up. So I call on this council, as well as the public, to hold them accountable for producing that data. Millions of dollars were spent, six million dollars were used ash into home visits in two school years, and they had no data to provide. That, to me, is sad, but also reluctantly, that is a choice that they made not to do. So I vote yes, but I hope that our partners come to the table and that our state officials are hearing this, that while we may not have full control of our school system since nineteen ninety-seven, the board, as well as members of that actual administration, must show up and show up for our Black children, our Brown children, every day, the way that we want them to, but to do this, they have to have the data to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. This bill is approved. Now, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and appropriations, Chair McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two hearings that are going to be canceled, and that's going to be as follows. The hearing scheduled for legislative oversight, LO two-five dash zero zero one zero, agency briefing, Department of Transportation. That was on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. That is canceled. The hearing scheduled for legislative oversight, LO two-five dash zero 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 nine, agency briefing, Department of Recreation and Parks, on Tuesday, April the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. That is canceled. We do have an additional hearing that is going to be rescheduled. The hearing scheduled for legislative oversight, LO two-five dash zero zero one one, briefing, fiscal year twenty twenty-six preliminary revenue estimates, that was originally scheduled for Tuesday, April the first, twenty twenty-five, is canceled. It will be rescheduled to Tuesday, April the eighth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at nine a.m. And on the same date, April the eighth, following is going to be the briefing on revenue estimates, as a reminder. The committee will also hold a hearing on LO two-five dash zero 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 one quarterly budget briefings with the Bureau of Budget and Management Research on that date. And on Tuesday, May the sixth, beginning at nine a.m., the committee will hold a hearing on LO two-five dash zero zero eight, agency briefing, capital budget, fiscal years twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair McCray. Education, youth, and older adults, no announcements. Housing and Economic Development, Chairman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Economic Development Committee will meet for City Council Bill twenty-five zero zero three eight on April twenty-ninth at four thirty. This bill is city property naming the playground located as Senator Troll Brerly Eastwood Park to the Margaret L. Powell Playground, for the purpose of renaming the playground located at the park in honor of Ms. Margaret L. Powell. The sponsor is myself. In addition to that, Mr. Chair, the Housing and Economic Development Committee will be announcing its first legislative oversight hearing. This legislative oversight hearing will be held on homeless services, for the purpose of calling representatives from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and other city agencies and community partners to report on services and projects in the city, and at creating permanent supportive housing options for those experiencing homelessness and exiting homelessness in the city of Baltimore. For those who don't know, this is near and dear to my heart as a person who was previously homeless. We are now spending ninety million dollars on acquiring two hotels in addition to supportive services for homelessness. The administration has now named a partner in terms of operating those two hotels. In addition to that, we just received our NOFA from the federal government, so it is about making sure that we can operate and pay our small community partners on time. Prior to this past budget, we had a conversation with the administration about being able to front-load the money until the federal dollars came through. As we know now, the federal government is inconsistent in terms of that, so we must make sure that we're able to support those partners in ensuring that homelessness is not a chronic issue in our city again. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Torrance. Labor and Workforce Chairman Jones?
No announcements, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Land Use and Transportation, Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Previously, I announced a hearing for LO twenty-five zero 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 four on June fifth, an oversight hearing in a series. This would be the hearing on... This would be the hearing on the subject of Tech Division and Footways at DOT. This has been canceled because it conflicts with the upcoming budget hearings. And just as sort of a reminder, I guess, because I did announce this at the end of the committee hearing last week on Council Bill Twenty-Five Zero 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 Six, the zoning code modifications, that hearing will continue this Thursday at ten o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Dorsey. Legislative Investigations, Chairman Schleifer, no announcements. Public Health and the Environment, Chair Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. The Public Health and Environment Committee will hold the following hearings. The first one is Council Bill Two Five Dash Zero Zero One Three, Child Health, Equitable Access to Health Services in City Schools, on Wednesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at ten a.m. The second one is Council Bill Two Five Dash Zero Zero Three Five, Gas Power Debris Removal Equipment Prohibition Enforcement, also, on Wednesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at ten oh one a.m. And then lastly, the Public Health and Environment Committee will hold a Legislative Oversight Hearing regarding Zero Waste to assess the city's progress towards achieving its zero-waste goals on Wednesday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at ten a.m. I'd like to commend Chairman Conway and Councilwoman Ramos for their leadership on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chairman Conway, Public Safety, no announcements. All right, we now move to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcement. First, I'd like to recognize members of the Trauma Informed Care Task Force. I'd like to, actually, before doing that, let me just say about these folks, you know, we have a lot of boards and commissions in this city. I have had the great honor of getting to serve alongside these folks with Councilmember Ramos, as well as we have embarked to be the first city in America to have legislated trauma-informed care. These folks have done exceptional work around restorative practices, around getting a library at KIP, around making sure our Behavioral Crisis Response Team is funded, on making sure our agencies are receiving proper training in trauma-informed practices, in making sure our hospitals are connecting together to get trained in trauma-informed care. And so this has been just an incredible group of folks from within government, from without a government, working together for the betterment of our city. I am truly grateful to have had the opportunity to serve, and I'm looking forward to bringing the task force back, getting the members reappointed. But with that, I'd like to make a motion for floor privileges for the following individuals: Farida Wahid, Teresa Bruce, Tomar Mendelson, Paul Galiatzatos, Phil Leaf, Mark Juz, Lindsay Gavin, Kevin Daniels, Donna Bruce, Desiree Dixon, Corey Witherspoon, Elijah Davis, Rashida Harold Brockington, Presence, Santifa, Molly Young, Khalila Salim, and Neganamdi. Without objection, the floor privileges, without objection, floor privileges will be granted. Floor privileges are granted, and if you all could come up briefly for a quick picture.
Please promote Jaron as a panelist. Jaron is one of the interpreters, and cannot turn the camera on.
I'd also like to call for a moment of silence for Anthony McCarthy. Anthony knew this chamber well and served our city admirably. Many of us in this room knew him as a friend, as a pastor, as a radio host, as a spokesperson for various mayors. He was the real deal. He was an incredible spirit. He had amazing rhetorical gifts, and I would just say he had a big imprint on my life, and I know on the lives of many in this chamber. So my heart is with Anthony's family and loved ones, and may his memory be a blessing. I will recognize Councilman Jones for extending floor privileges as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to take this moment to congratulate our very own Coach Herman Hurd on your incredible achievement, and we couldn't be prouder to see one of Baltimore's finest receiving recognition you solely, richly deserve as head coach of the East Squad at the Baltimore, I mean, at the McDonald All-American Game. Congratulations. Thank you. Coach, your selection to lead the East Squad at the Barclay Center in Brooklyn is a testament not just to your coaching brilliance, but to your character and the positive impact you've had on countless young athletes in the community. I read when you first received the invitation, you didn't believe it. You didn't believe it was real. You read it about ten times before it said it. Your remarkable journey at Lake Clifton in East Baltimore speaks for itself. Get ready for this impressive resume. Five hundred thirteen wins, six state titles, and five city championships over twenty-seven, over twenty-seven decade, decade, dedicated seasons. But we all know the numbers are only part of your story. Coach, it's an honor, and Coach, this honor isn't just yours, it belongs to all of Baltimore. But it couldn't have happened to a more deserving coach and mentor. We are all behind you and can't wait to cheer you on as you move forward. At this point, Mr. President, I would like to request floor privileges.
Without objection, floor privileges will be granted. Floor privileges are granted.
I'll welcome up Coach and your family. This resolution, the Baltimore City Council, the Baltimore City, well, the City Council Baltimore Resolution, it being here known to all that the City Council Baltimore offers this, to Coach Hurd, and it's in your recognition of being head coach of the East Squad at the McDonald's Forty-Eighth Annual All-American Game at the Barclay Center in Brooklyn, New York. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to present it on this twenty-fourth day of March, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations.
Thank you, Coach, and thank you, family. Chair recognizes Councilmember Porter to extend floor privileges as well.
Hello. Now we're cooking. So I just want to recognize Pastor Billy Humphries, who is the Executive Director of City of Refuge in South Baltimore. Pastor Humphries does so much work in South Baltimore, from feeding the homeless, providing a wonderful marketplace for Brooklyn residents, but also, his tagline is Bring Hope to Life, and that is exactly what he has done. He is a lifelong Brooklyn resident, and he just continuously pours back into the Brooklyn community. And so Pastor Billy, I just wanted to celebrate you today. You didn't tell me. I saw it on social media, and so I wanted you to come to City Hall and really have the City of Baltimore celebrate you and celebrate all the work that you're doing. So, Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules for floor privileges, please.
Without objection, floor privileges will be granted. Floor privileges are granted.
And so I'm just celebrating you and your seven years of dedicated service. I truly, truly appreciate all the work that you're doing.
Oh, I was giving him a personal. No, you're good. But Pastor Billy, I was just sharing, you know, I really do appreciate all the work that you're doing and all the work that you have done in South Baltimore, not only just keeping me focused, but also praying for me, making sure that I'm eating, making sure that I'm going to bed on time. So I really do appreciate you, and this is just a small token of just my appreciation and my love and support for any and everything that you do. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to arise today in recognition of the Independence Day, upcoming Independence Day celebrations for the Greek-American community here in Baltimore. I know my colleagues received invitations to participate in the Independence Day celebrations, including the reception beginning at twelve o'clock on Sunday over at the Greek Town Event Center there on Ponca Street, and then the parade starting at two o'clock. So I'll be there with my family and certainly hoping my colleagues will join us, and we extend our congratulations to the Greek community on their celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Parker. Any other regular announcements? I got Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Per usual, every year we have the Glenn's Falls Community Cleanup, which goes the entire parkway from where we start off, at Dr. Property Drive and into Garrison Boulevard. We're asking all neighbors, we're working with community leaders. We love you guys driving through our neighborhoods, but throwing trash out into our beautiful medians is not acceptable. So every year, we're going to start cleaning, as we always do with neighbors, to get out, have some merry-ment in terms of like coffee and donuts, but also taking care of what is our community asset, which is our beautiful onset parkways. So please join us on May seventeenth, starting at nine a.m. We usually end around one p.m. This is a great partnership with us, DPW, as well as a group of young people that do it. And if you are coming, we will give you a discount on your water bill. So it's actually a discount on your water bill if you come out and help us clean the streams. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Any other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none, we will now have a moment of silence for Anthony McCarthy. Thank you. Tonight's district spotlight comes from Councilmember McCray of the Second District. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have a very short presentation because I was just informed that we just have two minutes, so I'll just wait for it to pop up. Thanks, y'all. I'm sorry, Pierce. Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you, guys. So since I only have two minutes, I'm just rolling with this. It's quick wins in a second, and it's with me. So we've had so many great things, great initiatives, but the ones that pretty much bring me joy is what I'm going to share now. We can slide down now. I don't know. Thank you. So I'm going to talk about some of my parks and some work that's being done at some of my recreation centers and also some of my schools. This particular park is Radaki Park, and as you can see from that very first picture at the top, that was the before picture. And even the after picture doesn't quite show everything because it looks so much better in person, but while, why this one is important to me is because it is the first inclusive park that we've had within our district, and that was very important to me when Rexon Parks came with the first plan. And I'm very happy that Rexon Parks listened to me when I said I wanted more, and I wanted something that all children could participate in, have fun with, especially for kids with disabilities that folks may not be able to see, such as autism, such as ADHD. At this park, there are ground, it's ground-level equipment, sensory items, a ton of things, and you'll even see me hanging out in that picture at the top of a huge skate that's not, that's not shown in the other one. We can go to the next part. The next one is Silverbell Park, and it was also in pretty bad condition. This is a park that's like many of our parks hidden in the back of some alleys, the neighborhood, and this was just as important to me, but you can see the difference in the playground equipment, the commitment from Rexon Parks to say, hey, we're going to listen to you. I don't just want just another swing set. I want something that these kids can interact with, that we can take care of, and that we can have going forward. I want some different stuff. And this is Gardenville Recreation Center, and this is a groundbreaking for Gardenville Recreation Center. For anyone in Northeast Baltimore, actually, one of our pages mentioned it, I want to say, last term, where they talked about a roller skating program at Gardenville Recreation Center. And why, the reason why Gardenville Recreation Center was important, is important to me is because we're going to be getting the largest basketball court so far for the recreation centers within Baltimore City. There is a need for middle school competition where kids have to go now into our counties to participate, to find spaces to play, and this will allow competition where we can run multiple games at the same time. But it also allows us to bring back the famous roller skating program that was at Gardenville Recreation Center. For all of these commitments, there is a huge thanks to Rexon Parks for their time, for their commitment to listening, to not just me, but also our community about what programming is going to be, is going to be returned. It's a significant investment, and I'm happy that this is happening within the Second District. And this is the last slide. I could have put about a hundred... I could have put about 100 in here, but, you know, we only had two minutes. Furley Elementary School is the first 21st century school that is coming to the northeast portion of the Second District. It is something that we have worked hard for. And I definitely thank Senator Corey McCray for continuously identifying that, no, we need to invest in the kids in the Second District, where almost 20% of our children actually live within my district. So another reason that Furley is important to me is because we're not just getting a 21st century school, we're also getting a new recreation center. As a child, I played at Furley's Recreation Center. We practiced there for a ton of my basketball leagues that I participated in, coming all the way from West Baltimore in the Eighth District to Furley. I just can't wait for our kids to experience what's coming. And those are just some quick wins within the Second District. I do want to highlight that we're going to be releasing our spring walks that we typically do every season, just informal walks with agency members. That calendar will be released shortly, it's not included. But I'm looking forward to getting outside with my constituents, with our agencies, to identify what's going on and also see the great things that are happening within the Second District. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember McCray, for your leadership, not just for rec and park and schools, but also for making them inclusive playgrounds and inclusive rec centers. That means a lot to our kids. Appreciate you. All right. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, April 7, at 5:00 p.m. There being no further business, this concludes the seventh regular meeting of the 74th Term of the Baltimore City Council.